I'm push up.
I just feel really.
Look, I'm ready for y'all.
Yeah, it was there. Yeah, it clicked.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call the May eighth in order at six o'clock P M. I'd like to remind everyone there's a sign up sheet at the entrance for those who are interested in speaking during the public comment portion tonight meeting. Each speaker will be limited in five minutes and your time may not be shared with any other speaker and only in person comment will be taken. Pursuant to Virginia Code section two point two three seven zero eight point two, the town selection of authorized electronic participation in town meeting. Mister Wolf is joining us via Zoom tonight to travel for work from Forest City, North Carolina. Could I have a roll call, please, Miss Hall?
Certainly, I'll start with Mister Wall.
Here.
Maya.
Present.
Penel.
Present.
Mister Stewart.
Here.
That's the. President. Mayor Jackson.
Present. Do you want me to pray? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to meet this evening. Thank you for the crowd that has gathered for us today. We ask that you watch over our men and women of the military, our first responders across this great country. We ask that you give guidance to world leaders. And we ask that senseless act of violence continue to occur across our country. Then people will be loved and not filled with hate to do these acts. Pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and to the.
All right. There's approval of minutes for a special call. Council meeting of April sixth, twenty twenty three, the regular town council meeting and doing public hearing of April tenth, twenty twenty three, and a special call council meeting in April seventeenth, twenty twenty three. I need a motion for that, please.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Okay. So it never matter the motion.
Yeah.
Sorry. Move, so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. Now, now we just have. I got something. That's that's. If I'm saying she there are others. Six, three, and. I think that's clarified. I think all their time here actually. For the thing I'm saying. Hope that's. And that. That is. James. Grand. Had. Is a. That's. Um, how do I. If. Well, I'm saying. It's. Not well by the office. Or they. They have the law. But then it's. How I change. Once this. That. Which not trade. And but this makes. Thanks for the advice. First without. And make makes a little like seminar. Okay. Since this. So. This is like. Out like that. I'm. Shinging. That's. Right. The. Must. Like. That. Obviously. Um. Thank you. What page number for your first?
Uh, and first page. Page twenty. Section. I want to type that ahead first. You know, to make sure that they they know. Single. Which it is stated. It actually either. But. Maybe they stop reading. We're probably. They have another section. Every time that's mentioned, that one's perfect. That's all.
Mister Mayor, if I may, sir. On page twenty. Underneath. Open session, I have priority determination. I believe that referring to both connected sections.
That, okay. And then actually, I have. I'm. But page thirty, that's. Same. Um.
The word good with the.
Yeah, that's not. I just. But page thirty, that that's. Very. And I mean. They. They. They are very. I am.
All right, so the town registered. Last we count on April twenty second, after working out her should be. Saying she's. So. That was Mister Hall.
I've been.
Now, now part of Mister Hall.
Five.
Um, page two. April sixth. The action item states. Mia Jackson asked for a motion to appoint Susan Smith as town manager for an interim period of four months. My recollection of what that motion was, was we voted to offer the position of town manager with an interim status of. We did not vote to appoint her as an interim. We voted to offer her the position of town manager with an interim status. Yep. There's. Somebody else. And then it was unanimous of that. Yeah. No. It's still, it still says we appointed her, we we voted to appoint her. We voted to offer it. That's the key word there. And the way it's worded as as town manager for an interim period of four months. My opinion is it should say with an interim status of four months because the way it's worded is that that's all we offered. That. So offer the position of town manager with an interim status. Right, and that was unanimous. It's, it's close, but it does mean two different things. Offer the position, so count. Motion to offer Susan Smith the position of town manager with an interim status of four months.
I have another question. You want to come out? Right. Oh, but I got a call. I was. I got. I got.
Any other amendments?
And let me reach out. There's argument. Our first. Position of town manager with. That. For a period of four months.
Yeah. Offer the position of town manager with an interim status of four months. All right.
We could look here.
Well.
That reason. Same about him in the first discussion. That how you win the win. That was the only thing. Yeah.
Any other amendments? Roll call, please, Miss Hall. That out. Yeah.
All right. Wait.
What else?
I don't know. Or the. Say. Tractions.
That's, that's somebody.
That's what I'm saying. It's like, I don't. Don't say. Anything. Go out. Everybody. Everybody.
The boss said, thank you. He's following. Terminally. He can't hear you. The ball down. So on, they don't worry.
Watch the videos. They they have been working since the town came up about complaints about businesses. Really yours works. I mean, yours works really.
So. There you go. Yeah. Okay, everybody's. Working. Ask him.
I can hear you now. I heard everybody now. Thank you.
Ready for roll call?
Yes, ma'am.
On the minute. Okay, Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Ms. Penel.
Hi.
Mister Stewart.
Hi.
Ms. Dasta.
All right.
Mister Walls.
Hi.
Mister Dijack.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we'll move on to action items. Our first action item is the adoption of the capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty twenty four through twenty twenty eight. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the capital improvements program fiscal year twenty four to twenty eight as presented.
They move.
Second.
Thank you. Bradford and Mister Stewart. Do we have any discussion on this?
I just wonder if it's altered from time that Sue showed it to us. Was anything changed since Sue left?
Twenty six? Not that I. Okay. Have a month of public hearing. Roll call, please, Miss Hall.
All right, Ms. Penel.
Hi.
Mister Stewart.
Hi.
Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Ms. Dasta. Mister Walls.
Hi.
Dijack.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi, motion passes. Next up is consideration of ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget setting tax rates and appropriating funds. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
I'll, I'll make so move, but I I do want to just note, just for the record, there are some contributions being made to the panel history. I do want to note as being affiliated as a board member on that, I just want to make that fully transparent, although it was not part of that recommendation for public.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mister Walls. Is there any discussion on this? Roll call, please, Miss Hall.
All right, Ms. Dasta. Mister Walls.
Hi.
Ms. Penel.
Hi.
Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Mister Stewart.
Hi.
Mister Dijack.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi, motion passes. Next action item is the consideration of bids for the wayfinding signage progress. Maggie Roche is joining us for her first time at a council meetings, our economic development coordinator. And we have a staff report.
Yes. And I believe Krista is going to pull up an updated version and the one that was sent out. So. Okay. Um, so the town of Dayton did solicit bids for the wayfinding signage project. As a reminder, the budget for this project had been set at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the town received two bids for this project and the lowest bid came in at two hundred and eighty nine thousand and a hundred and thirteen dollars. Um, so still a bit over budget. Um, so staff contacted the lowest bidder to discuss value engineering options to kind of bring this cost down a little bit closer to the original budget. Um, and the lower bidder did indicate that the design provided by Frazier Associates is already streamlined as much as possible. Um, and they suggested that any cost saving measures could come from phasing the project out. Um, because of the V dot permits required for this project, the easiest portion to phase out would be the information kiosk signs. And that's the bottom picture up on the screen there. Um, so I kind of came up with three different options for you guys to look at. Um, the first would be to award the bid um at full cost, the entire thing. Um, the second would be to award the bid at a cost not to exceed two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. This option would include only one of the information kiosk signs and we would place that one in Duck Park. Um, the third option is to go ahead and approve the bid at a cost not to exceed two hundred and fifty two thousand, nine hundred and fifty one dollars, which is much closer to our original budget. Um, that that option does not include any of the kiosks. So. That's pretty much where we're at right now. Welcome your thoughts.
So. As many of you know, this project has been going on for a long time. Um, it's gone on so long that the uh, the scope of the work has changed. Um, the the pricing, obviously, as anybody knows that purchases anything recently, those prices continue to change. Uh, just the getting all the engineering and the layouts and everything else, Ms. Roach has done inordinate amount of work. Um, so thank you for all that. Personally, I would hate to see, as long as this has been worked on, to see the scope of this project be reduced. We have money um that we can use to spend to complete this project as it was originally designed. But of course, that's up to a council discussion.
Where's, where?
Well.
Where's the money coming from? I was asking the finance person.
There has been a mix of grants and town funding off this project.
Right.
What? I can't hear you.
There's been a mix of grant funding and town funding on this project.
If I'm not mistaken, too, uh, Mr. Roach, the the part of that, too, uh, Mister Manager, um, we do have some uh, cost savings from other capital projects that we could uh, easily absorb uh, into this project, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. All right. So in other words, this is not a, this won't change our bottom line capital outlay uh, award if we were to go for that not to exceed two hundred and eighty nine thousand, correct? Yes. Okay. Then I, yeah, I.
What's?
Oh. Yeah.
What's the approximate percentage of of the money going to be covered by grants and and donations, whatever you said?
Um, so seventy five thousand of this comes from grant funding and that's twenty five thousand dollars from a USDA grant and then fifty thousand dollars from the county tourism grant.
Okay.
There are expiration.
So.
On the screen.
Um, on the USDA one, we are already past expiration on that. They're just being very kind to us. And the county one doesn't really have a strict deadline, but I think they would like to see us wrap this project up as fast as we can.
Yeah, we base it.
So basically.
Right.
So basically a bit over, if we went for a full amount, a bit over two hundred thousand would be coming out of the the Dayton, our, our fund. Our money, right?
A little over that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Right.
Technically, we can say we're under, but we could say we're under budget if you look at it from that point of view.
That's.
Well. Do that in.
I don't know if you can look that way, but.
Love your optimism, uh, Mister Walls. I, I mean, it for staff's perspective, I know we've been working through this and I thank all the business owners who've been patient and working through this process. I, I think the kiosks were a key components of this uh, project and I mean, if we, because we not only want to redirect, uh, you know, uh, vehicular traffic, you know, people driving by on forty two to get into, you know, all of our points of interest in downtown, but we also want to make sure when people are here, they can easily find their way around, see business directory, get the information they need. So um, I'd, I'd be comfortable, I just speaking for myself, just to see this project through, it'd be a shame if we came that far and over this last uh, key component. Uh, and I would just note, too, you know, we have budgeted, uh, you know, the vast majority of this, this project. And again, we are, uh, we're, we have some cost savings in other capital projects. It would be. I'd be comfortable making that motion to award it.
And as we um, with any construction project, really any project that goes on right now, or anytime, you always have to allow for change orders.
Yeah.
You know, with it, with a project of this scope, there, there's going to be some things that are going to pop up that we weren't looking at. So rather than doing the two hundred and eighty nine thousand, I'd like to see three hundred thousand, which will cover any change orders that we have. That way, you're not going to have to come back to them and say, hey, we just got a change order for eight hundred dollars, but we've already said, you know, you can't.
Right.
That two eighty nine.
Yeah.
So if, if there's further conversation or um, thoughts on that?
I mean, I just think if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it and spend any amount of money, we need to do it right. Yeah.
I agree. Yep.
I'm comfortable with the three hundred thousand.
Okay. Then I, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that, oh, actually, I guess we should, I guess we need to award it to the actual low bidder.
Yes.
Okay, so which?
Do you, do you need the name?
Yes.
It's right light.
Right light.
Right light.
Okay, right light. All right. Well, very good. Then I'll, I'll make that motion that we were, uh, the contract not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars to write like, uh, uh, incorporated for uh, for the wayfinding signage project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, she. Ms. Mathias. And Ms. Penel. Um. Uh. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, please, Miss Hall.
All right, Ms. Penel.
Hi.
Mister Stewart.
Hi.
Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Mister Walls.
Hi.
Ms. Dasta. Mister Dijack.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi, motion passes. Uh, now it's a consideration of appointment actions which are necessary for the continuity of government and to ensure. Um, we have a lot of appointments, so bear with me as we go through these. Um, the point Earl Mathers as clerk to town council. Appoint Krista Hall as deputy clerk to the town council. Appoint Earl Mathers as a freedom of information officer for the town. Appoint Earl Mathers as member to the Hurst of the Sewer Authority. Adam Meek will continue to serve as the alternate. Appoint Earl Mathers as member to the H R M P O policy board. Ms. Hall will continue to serve as the alternate and as a member to the technical advisory committee. And authorize town manager and treasurer to be in approved signatures for disbursements on behalf of the town. Authorize town manager and treasurer to approve investments on behalf of the town. Appoint Earl Mathers as alternate to the steering committee for the central tenado of all hazards mitigation plan. And Chief Trout is our primary member there. Um, and, and while I'm doing all this, let me introduce Earl Mathers, who is our interim town manager. So, uh, welcome, sir. And we just pointed you to a whole lot of work. Uh, I need a motion. I need a motion to.
Question though, before we did, like, all these are presented when you leave, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
They'll be reappointed.
But this is for the town manager. If Bob didn't meet it because he wasn't staying, so I just wanted to make sure that you don't continue to do these things after we hire someone else.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So I entertain a motion to accept all the appointment actions as presented.
So move.
Mister Dijack and second by Mister Stewart, is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Miss Hall.
All right, Mister Stewart.
Hi.
That's a.
All right.
Mister Walls.
Hi.
Ms. Penel.
Hi.
Ms. Mathias.
Hi.
Mister Dijack.
Hi.
Mayor Jackson.
Hi, motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, that does include the action items for this evening. Uh, we'll now get into public comments, but before we do that, I want to make a, a couple of comments. Um, first of all, it's great to have a full room. I say this every time we have a full room and I wish every month we had a full room. Um, welcome to our T A students this evening. It's always good to, to see you out here, even though you have to do it because you need the credit. You have seven council members that sit before you, uh, one via Zoom. We were elected by the citizens of Dayton and um, it is insulting to these elected members to, for people to say that they are sheep and being led along. Every one of them has a mind and they are not afraid to speak their opinion. So for anybody to say that they are being coerced or let alone um, is absolutely not the truth. Anything that comes before this council for consideration, nothing happens until this council votes on it in public session. Nothing happens behind closed doors. If there's closed sessions, we come out from inside those closed sessions and then the vote is made. Um. We have a council member who loves to say that that individual loves the town because they've lived here all their life. The rest of the council members up here could choose to live anywhere they want. But we chose Dayton. Not only did we choose Dayton to live in and raise our families in, we chose Dayton to serve. You don't do this because of the money. You don't do it for any fame. You do it because you want to make your community better. And for people out there to constantly attack and criticize and second guess what council does, again, we were elected. I've been elected three different times, but as citizens of Dayton, and we are up here to do the best job we can. You don't always have to agree with it and we love to hear people come in and give their comments. We truly do. Again, I wish we had this kind of peop- uh, crowd every time. The town has had way too many town managers over recent years. It is very important that this town manager is a town manager that we are going to have for a long time. It is very expensive to recruit. It's very expensive to retain. It's expensive just to pay them. I mean, it is not a low paid position. So it is important to council that we get the right person for the job. Um. We offered, Ms. Smith applied for a job. She was made an offer for that job. We offered, Ms. Smith applied for a job. She was made an offer for that job. And, and I had concerns. I'd be right up front. I had concerns. I let Ms. Smith know what those concerns were. And what she said to me was, I wouldn't respect you if you didn't have those concerns and you weren't willing to share those. There are other members on council who had concerns. Even with those concerns, Ms. Smith was offered a job. She came back to us. We had further conversation. No counter offer was given. Council had conversation about the original offer, and we came back with a second offer. The second offer was also declined. We wish Ms. Smith nothing but the best. We appreciate the twenty-three years of service that she gave this town. We appreciate everything she has done. And I know that Broadway is going to be better for having her. It is unfortunate the way it ended. Nobody wanted it to end that way, but we do wish her the best. I'm happy to, uh, report that Ms. Hall has stepped into an interim treasurer position. So she is doing that on top of her clerk duties and the community development stuff that she does. So she is, uh, very busy. It. It is difficult for all of us to be constantly criticized in the community. We swore an oath to do the best we can for the people who elected us. We go into closed session, and in that closed session, we discuss things that are not to leave the closed session. When you have a council member that continues to share that information that's discussed with citizens, business owners, staff members.
One-on-one guys.
Applicants.
Absolute slander.
And when you have people.
Stop, Carrie.
When you have people that.
Warned. I will get an attorney. I will get an attorney. Mrs. Crank, did I tell you anything after the meeting? Did I break confidentiality?
When you.
But you know who did break confidentiality was this man, because he told Krista about it after the meeting. You, sir, broke confidentiality.
When you have people that don't understand the process, refuse to understand the process. It is, um.
He should stop. That's all I'm telling you. You have been warned. I will get an attorney.
Thank you, ma'am.
You have slandered me multiple times in this building. It will not happen again, and this is the fourth time, y'all.
First of all, I didn't use your name.
Oh, you did. It's, it's me. Hello?
First speaker is Mr. Sean Lo. If you could please come address council.
Mayor Jackson. In the, obviously, the capital improvement, uh, program this year, twenty-four to eighteen, was noted as the initial fifty thousand dollars allocated specifically to create a standard, uh, project. Uh, as taxpayers, so family members or, we would just ask for additional transparency that we can understand what the, so that project is. As well as I was very understanding of how those, that, 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 that. That way we. Thank you very much. Good to talk. Yeah, advance for your transparency on this.
Thank you, Ms. Lo. Uh, next speaker, Stacy Jackson.
Is that better?
Okay.
For those of you who don't know me, I am someone who grew up all over the East Coast as a Navy brat of a fighter pilot. As a military child, it missed a lot. I started over a lot, and I met scores of different people. I spent quite a bit of time observing, quietly watching those around me in each of our new duty stations to figure out where do I fit in? When you do it as often as our family did, I got pretty damn good at it. I also learned when to be heard and when to be quiet. As an introvert, I always will take quiet. But I am here tonight to talk with you about our town and what I have observed and heard and learned most. As I mentioned, I've been here for the past eighteen years, raised a family, built a life, put down roots. And slowly over time, that military ingrained voice that says, prepare to move, quieted. I'm proud of our town and what's been built here. Interestingly, over the past three years, COVID has changed for many in all aspects of life. I find I've spent more time watching, observing, to answer the question, does my family still fit here in Dayton? Because moving at my age is not something I wish to do, I have come to the conclusion that we do fit here. And we do because of the work you council members do and engage in for our town. You're visible. You're committed to our town's growth and our infrastructure. You keep the future in mind, making decis-, decisions that benefit what comes next for Dayton. As a Navy brat, I was raised with the understanding that our country was founded on good people from many different walks of life, coming together to build a stronger whole and not serve the individual. I was raised to believe disagreements were productive. They broadened our perspectives. It challenges us. After all, it doesn't change us. Disagreement, though, should be respectful. It doesn't include personal attack on one's character. When my children were little, we often had a saying in our house when we were going someplace new, as I reminded them before they got out of the car to put their filter on. My oldest. Do I need? Filters are good. They help us learn. The varied nature of a filter requires us to listen to each other first and then consider what to say. As we emerged from COVID, a time when ironically, we had our mouths covered more often than ever in the past. I find unfortunately that people actually filter less. It's less respectful disagreement, less focus on making the whole better or the whole stronger. And sadly, there's more focus on the individual. As I close, there is a reason you all are there and I am here. I don't do politics. I elected you. I trusted you to do what we needed to do for our town, just like the vast majority of our Dayton residents. I wanted to publicly commend the majority of our council members for the work you have done and will do to support Dayton moving forward to a brighter, fuller future. I hope you can remember that while you will hear a lot of noise, it's just that, it's noise. Noise detracts from what is beautiful about Dayton. Your efforts, your words, your commitment are so greatly appreciated by the vast majority of Dayton's townspeople. As Winston Churchill once said, if you're going through hell, keep going. I urge you all to do that tonight. Dayton needs you all as our leaders. Thank you for what you've done and will continue to do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ms. Deb Crank.
My name is Deb Crank, and I was speak about the merchant activity on, on College and Main Streets. At the adjournment of the March meeting, I spoke to Bradford regarding the next joint town and merchant meeting, and that I'd been, I touched base with Maggie for dates. I was under the weather in April. I'm sure all of you missed me, which.
Yes, I did.
Maybe a filter. Maybe I was filtering. And so my rose-colored glasses needed adjusting. There was an air of negativity in that March meeting. A resident was allowed to speak without being signed in to speak, and the questions asked could have been answered after adjournment. My niece attended for her high school credit at TA and made a few observations. During the closed session, which all of you would have missed all of this, one of the merchants attacked, attempted to get to the bottom of nanny negative gate. That's a totally different story from. It was also, I could hear comments made about me. She hasn't been to my place, hasn't been to my place in six months. I chose to filter. You all know a person can own, decide what level effort to put out there when there are barriers that cannot be overcome. Therefore, my Jeannie, AKA Nick. No fault eviction notice. I'm not going to cry. I'm not going to cry. The notice of her father. There was a note on the door regarding the shop was closed due to the death in the family. Prior to that notice, at the event, there was a Bridgewater merchant who came in. The shop was all friendly with, with Jeannie. I've because to me. While I understand business is business, and that's what you're served in eviction or you're laid off. And Mr. Walls, I know you probably heard it once or twice with some of your business dealings. It's a tough pill to take because no matter what it is, it's still personal to the person that got served the layoff notice or the eviction. Especially during the death in the family. It is crushing, to say the least, for Jeannie's dream, which was to own a shop. Were fond memories of being at nanny's house, having a soda or a piece of chocolate pie. And for today's generation, it was to be greeted with a warm smile and conversation because I was in the shop when the JMU and the Bridgewater College students would come in. It was never about the money or just being a business. I've cried for Jeannie's broken heart. Now I'm going to use those energies to help Jeannie process the closing of her dream. A wise man recently told me to remember that money is not the root of all evil. It is the love of money. I'm not going anywhere. I'll continue my efforts to grow our customer base. It'll be for those who appreciate it as a collaborative attitude. I'm just not going to spend the energy trying to get everybody together like I did for about eighteen months. Um, and I appreciate and thank all of you for your time and support of our merchants.
This is Crank. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Uh, next speaker is Lisa Holzman.
Holzman, three twenty-five Ashby Street, uh, former coun-, councilwoman. Here, you may recognize me. Carrie, we ran together. I was one. You didn't. That's in the past, so. Um, just wanted to put a timeline out there and Ms. Asta, if you took care of a lot of this for me, so I do appreciate that with you wanting to get the minutes straight and everything. I appreciate that. But I do have a timeline. I wanted to bring to, um, but I also wanted to address your, your speech you made earlier about the money and everything. When I was on council, I did bring it to council's attention earlier. I mean, when I was there, one of the first things I wanted to do was give up our, um, getting paid. Because I don't think that if you're in public service, you should be paid for what you do. I think if you're doing it for, not for the money, don't get paid. And that's one of the first things I brought up was I, when I was on town council, and boy, they shot me down real quick and said, please don't ever bring that up again. I understand y'all got a raise when you got on council.
No, ma'am.
You didn't. So you still make what we made fifteen years ago? Or maybe y'all shouldn't make anything. Just think about that one. It's just a thought. Anyway, there's, um, three council people, I understand, and at least one of you is going around telling people that Susan Smith had a unanimous seven-zero vote for the town manager position, and if you don't know why she declined the person. I mean, just declined that position, but I wanted to tell everybody here, you know, let you know why. On January of twenty-three, the resume and the letter of interest was submitted by her. Three twenty-four, twenty-three, the initial interview, council requested it, Susan give a presentation to go along with that resume. On four, six, twenty-three, the presentation was given and the unanimous vote, seven-zero. That evening, roughly at seven-thirty PM, Mayor Jackson called on the speakerphone with all council members present. And Susan was given a verbal offer of a four-month interim to prove herself and then possible permanent town manager position. There was no mention of what salary or expectations would be during this interim period or beyond. On four, seven, twenty-three, Susan sent an email to council requesting information pertaining to what proving herself entailed, and if there would be a formal offer letter to include salary and expectation. She received a phone call from Mayor Jackson around five that evening with salary information and how he arrived at the percent increase of monetary figure based on other interim positions with other locality. On four, ten, twenty-three, council meeting day, Susan sent the email again, inquiring of an offer letter to include expectations of proving herself. Mainly the expectations and asking council to keep in mind that in the next four months, while being expected to prove herself, that she would also be training someone in the treasurer's position, ending a fiscal year, beginning a new fiscal year, and engaging in the annual audit. At approximately five forty-five, just fifteen minutes before the council meeting, Mayor Jackson verbally told Susan the offer, which insists of the use of a laptop, cell phone, and the use of a vehicle when it became available from the police department. There was nothing in writing or expectation giving, just verbal information. Mayor Jackson then inquired about announcing acceptance of the new job position in the council meeting that evening. Susan told him she would prefer holding off until a written offer was received. On four, twelve, finally, an unprofessional offering with a laundry list of job duties was slid under her office door on the floor, which she stepped on before even noticing it. Later that afternoon, she submitted her resignation from the Dayton Town Treasurer position. On four, thirteen, Mayor Jackson and Susan had a conversation as to the reasons why she submitted her resignation. She explained how she felt disrespected by the whole chain of events and that it seemed very unprofessional for the highest administrative position within the organization. He also expressed her concerns of certain micromanagement styles and inappropriate use of public assets and resources. And Chief Trout was present for that entire conversation, so it would not be just a one-on-one conversation. On four, seventeen, the special call meeting, a consensus was taken in closed session of four, three, to offer town manager position to Susan. Councilwoman Mathias expressed three times to Susan for her to understand it is not a unanimous decision to offer her the town manager position. At that time, Susan respectfully declined the offer based on the four-three vote. She also pointed out the attorney would agree likely it needed to be a unanimous decision. After returning out of closed session of this meeting, the minutes do not reflect anything about the Susan declining the position of the town manager or anything about her resignation from the town treasurer position that was submitted on four, twelve. Only that they were hiring the Berkeley group to look at hiring both positions.
Fifteen seconds.
What the heck happened? Is it Groundhog Day again? It's like this Twilight Zone going on here. So what happened in that six days to change the vote from seven-zero to four-three? Were there discussions held outside the call meetings between you all to come up with that?
I can tell you.
Next speaker is Ms. Tara Worthy.
Any of this process, everything was done behind my back and multiple council people. And I don't know, I passed math. Sorry, it's not majority. Y'all high school kids can attest to that.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. My name is Tara Worthy, and I have had a business in the town of Dayton for ten years this year, located at two fifty-five College Street. I want to start out by saying thank you to Emily. I appreciate everything you have tried to do with the restraint of the mayor in trying to silence your work. Arrested her, Emily. You're appreciated by many in Dayton. I want to thank Robert for his honesty. As I know from my personal past years on the Dayton Town Council, how difficult it can be, but standing with the truth will set your mind at ease. Bob, I do not know you well, and I have had my doubts, but I thank you for the support, students, for your support for Susan Smith over the last several months. Melody, you've been on council not quite five months, but I thank you for standing up for this town and for Susan Smith. It doesn't matter if Sam Lee and I don't get along, or if Cheryl Lyons and Mike Logan don't see eye to eye. Or Emily Estes' feelings aren't quite the same as Bob's. The common denominator in this small group of business owners, residents, and council members is pretty clear. Susan Smith is a great asset to this small knit community. And in my opinion, you three made a terrible mistake for Dayton. Councilwoman Susan Mathias, I will comment on your Facebook post from six days ago pertaining to the roots running deep in this town. You have no idea how deep these local roots. You have no idea how deep these local roots run. Vice Mayor Bradford Dijack, I will correct you one more time on the four, three consensus in the closed session on four, seventeen versus the seven, oh, taken on the four, six. You and I had a conversation on Saturday, as you know. And I do believe you know exactly where I'm speaking. Mayor Carrie Jackson. You ran in twenty eighteen on the grounds of transparency and still like to talk about transparency. You may think you have fooled the Dayton residents by not having complete descriptions of the minute for the meetings for the past several years. But I am here to tell you that we've been paying close attention. And the few that do show up, Susan, to the meetings every month have been educating the majority of your behavior. You, sir, in my opinion, are the parent elected official I have ever met, pardon.
Thank you, Ms. Worthy. Next speaker, Yolanda Waggy.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. You aren't gonna like me when I get done. First off, I want to thank Emily Estes. For being the only council member that has ever stood up and had the back of the Dayton resident. I want to thank you, Robert, for your honest answer. When I messaged you, because I was not allowed to message um, council members on the town website. Because this was my question. I started off by reaching out to Ms. Penel. I'm writing this evening to ask you a very important question that I pray you answer honestly. Were you present or advised of the meeting with two members of the Berkeley group and Mayor Jackson at his residence? Thank you for your time and I look forward to your answer. I get a security alert for enhanced security. Our contact form now includes additional blocking mechanisms for certain words. Your submission has been blocked by this security feature. Please attempt to resubmit the form using alternative language. Or contact us for more information. Are you all against the word pray? Cause that's the only thing I can figure out. So I kindly use Facebook Messenger to message four council members. I did not ask Emily. Simply because I have witnessed since she has been on this council, how every one of you treat her. You treat her like she's the scum of the earth. You have publicly reprimanded her. Yet councilman, advocate councilman. And this is available online. You were seen drinking a long neck Bud Light. When Sam Lee says it's time for invocation. Apparently all of you, he reprimands her publicly. Do the remaining members of council okay that? Is that acceptable behavior? Let's go on a little farther. Why are we paying previous town manager Lawrence a severance package? According to the town minutes, she resigned. So did she resign and you all felt sorry for her and decided to give her a severance package? Or, or did you ask her to leave before being terminated as to not tarnish her reputation? And the town gets sued. Is it true that Ms. Lawrence packed the town's personnel files and that you returned them to the town building? I also heard that you used a, your mayor office to run your business in Charlottesville. Using taxpayers' equipment, paper and the like, as well as having a refrigerator in your office. The biggest question is, why did you pay Bob Holton ten thousand plus dollars? To come in here and choose? I know my town's probably running up. That's okay. I'll hand it to the newspaper people and the TV people when they go, I'll leave. You know, you're frivolously spending money. I didn't ask you what I asked the others because I honestly do not feel Mr. Dijack that you would be honest with me. So my final question stems. What is your punishment? You publicly humiliated and reprimanded Councilwoman Estes, who was elected just like you. What is his punishment for drinking? And here we have all the high school seniors. How many of them saw you drinking a long neck Bud Light? And you wonder? So my final piece of information here. Over the past couple of weeks. According to section two, twenty-four point two dash two thirty-three. That is effective until January first, twenty twenty-four. Removal of elected and certain appointed officials. I have busted my butt walking around town, visiting people. I have obtained ten percent of a required vote. To have the Rockingham County clerk of the court consider your remove. Do the right thing and your responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. Mike. I apologize. Uh, the next speaker, Ernod. I'm gonna butcher that name. What is the name, sir? Your last name?
I will.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. How are you all? All right, good. Um, so like I was hoping to come here and get some answers, right? Like I have heard some horrible, horrible accusations throughout town. Um, but this really didn't help. Like I, I feel like I'm leaving more confused than I came in. So I'm just kinda, I'm a little worried. Um, obviously my that, um, live on Eastview, we come down here and we were hoping to get a little bit, some answers or figure out, but we're just kinda feeling like we're missing something here. There's definitely something going on like on this town council and there's a lot of hate. So we just, I mean, what, what is going on? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I love your yard. Next speaker is Hunter Carter. And Penny Imison.
Good evening. I'm Penny Imison. I'm the director for Rocktown History, which is located on High Street. And would certainly encourage people to come visit. I came with some thoughts about comments and I'm not sure I'm in the right meeting for them. But since I do represent a history organization. Um, first I'm just going to say thank you to all of you for your service. I once applied for a job through an election process. And, um, I, I commend anybody who's willing to give public service this way. I, I just, I can see that you have challenges much broader than anything that I would have ever had to encounter if I had won my election. And I know that the challenges are great. I like to think of challenges as opportunities. So perhaps there will be some, um, some introspection and some some innovation, maybe new ways to do things, some bridge building, extending hands for partnerships. These are the things that I think about. So maybe there is some similarity or parallel for you. Um, I did come because I was interested in the wayfinding signs. So I'm just going to say thank you. Um, I, I think it's important for us to get these in place so that we can see how they, what they will do. I also wanted to report that since you have been supportive of the Dayton Welcome Center. That we are hiring a bookstore and welcome center manager. So after a couple of quiet years during COVID and thereafter, I, I think that we can start, um, seeing some more activity for our tourism and our community members. Um, you guys are great in Dayton about taking care of activities for people and encouraging visitation. And so I thank you for that. Um, I'm pretty sure there was something that I was, oh, I students are here because as a history professional, we're all about learning our history, learning from our history, and a big part of that is civics. So my last thank you, except I have to give a shout out to the Dayton staff and the Dayton PD because, you know, they show up for our uh, false alarms a lot. So, uh, sorry about that. It was my fault on Friday. Um, but the civics lesson is very important here and it's good that we can have community conversations. So I'm, I'm hopeful that these will continue, um, with civil conversations. Thank you.
I had spoken to these clients about trying to reach out to some person. Some more activities from them, from the mobile ones to come and maybe we can get together and work something out to where they see the Greenway and Cheryl's and you can see him in his park, you have the handicap swing and the tables. And I just, I was gonna come by and I was wanting to talk to you about that one. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
We have had, um, Ms. Crank has come up here month after month after month. And, uh, requested that Ms. Estes be appointed to a committee. I've had staff members who have requested that Ms. Estes be appointed a committee. I am removing myself from the police committee and appointing Ms. Estes to the police committee. So that'll be effective the next meeting. So congratulations for that. Yes, ma'am. So we have no unfinished business this evening. We have no new business. We oh, a report. So sorry. Hey, I forgot you. Thank you. So we got, uh, the manager's report, um, and we are going to turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief, uh, but it is indeed a pleasure to be here. I, uh, absolutely honored to be able to serve here in Dayton. I am most impressed with both the community. And certainly with staff. I've had the opportunity over the last week now to engage with all of the staff and to become acquainted with them. And I can ensure the citizens of this community that you have top caliber staff. That is absolutely assertive. Uh, my objective, of course, is to serve the citizens of, uh, Dayton as effectively as I can. And to provide efficient service. Uh, I'm all about good governance. I really believe in being responsive to to, uh, everyone, certainly including the, the town council as well as the citizens of Dayton. And I'm also solution oriented. So I'm, uh, very interested in seeing what we can accomplish. Obviously, you know, I've been placed here by the Berkeley group on interim basis, uh, and we will be proceeding with the recruitment of a full-time permanent, uh, town manager in the very near future. And I'm sure that that, uh, that selection process, the recruitment selection will go very, very well, very skilled professionals at accomplishing this thing. I want to mention just a couple of things, uh, from from my report, which I furnished to the council that I, I particularly notable. One has to do with the police department, uh, the accreditation process is going very well. And that is extremely encouraging. I think seeing the level of professionalism that you have in law enforcement in this community. Uh, that's are being planned there as well. The, I'm extremely pleased that the, uh, that the council embraced and pulled the wayfinding signage, uh, program because I think it's really important. It is just because of the layout of the town. I think it's possible for people to pass it through the community to miss certain choices. So with the new signage, I think that will be a good step in overcoming that, that challenge. Uh, a lot of things are happening. I, you know, I can't believe the number of good events that occurred in Dayton, uh, over the course of the year. The Red Bud Festival is very successful. I think, uh, I read that, uh, registrations for Dayton days are already sold out. There's not a waitlist for that. Big events for a town the size. They have ones that are well-known throughout the, uh, the region. So, uh, good stuff. But in any case, I'm not going to belabor this, but again, I, I wanna thank you for this opportunity to be here and I look forward to the next few months that I'll be here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Police Department report, chief?
You can take sunscreen or aloe vera.
Mr. Bowman, I have no report. Anybody on council have any comments?
I do. I'd like to, um, thank the staff for going through what y'all been going through. I know it's been really, um, full of turmoil and very chaotic and things are happening that shouldn't be happening. Just know that we all do support y'all. And if you ever have any issues, please, I'm like a pit bull. Please come to me. Um, Skeeter, please give Susan a hug for me. Um, I've known them for a very long time. I've known Skeeter since I was a kid. And I've known Susan since high school. And sorry to get emotional, but I have never in my life seen this woman professionally or personally disrespected. I've never had one person utter one bad word about her till this poor woman applied for the job that the council before us wanted her to have. Um, I do apologize to you, sir. Um, there were some things that happened and, uh, I'm very aware of the process. But when I, y'all need an addition lesson. When you need a majority to do things. Three is not four. That's like one plus one equals six. It's not happening. You need to have the majority to function, or at least let us know. I literally found out that she was not picked for, um, or like she got the, the recommendation from Bob and like literally didn't even know about, I swear I was great. Text her, say, hey, don't forget to apply for that job. I get a call from business owners. Um, they've already done interviews. They already disregarded, um, Bob Holton's recommendation there. If I wouldn't have found out, and thank God I did, that people went to a dinner later on and found out some more information about the Timerville man. So I got a call from Susan's husband saying, hey, I would just like you to read her recommendation letters. I said, I would love to. I know she's qualified. Sally Whoop, Verde County, the chief of, uh, fire. I wanted to see him. So I had to ask him officially because I'm a councilwoman. Who, if y'all don't know, it's council town manager mayor. Okay? That's a lesson we can all learn today in history class of Emily's head. But like really I just, I cannot fathom how these people find out before I do. They went to a dinner and found out. They met with the town manager. Then I get a call telling me that the mayor is upset that I found out because I hit Krista and asked for the resumes. So I got them all. That's the only way I found out. I had no idea. Granted, yes, it does. It goes from Bob to gets whittled down, but you literally did all this and y'all too, by yourselves, we found out. You got pissed. It got drug out. It cost us more money with Bob than you three. My God. Hmm. We'll leave that for another day or for the paper, but like it's just disrespectful and I am so very sorry because I did not have a clue. I know you didn't have a clue. I asked her if she knew if Susan applied for the job. Her response was no, but I'd like to see her resume to see if she's even qualified. All nasty to me, right? So then we get into another meeting and she say, oh, I knew all along. Well, I don't know if y'all know, but three means it's a meeting. It had to be the two, cause if you add the third, you gotta write it down. It's gotta be a record. So I don't know. I'm stupid, I guess. I don't know how to add or understand the concept of government. But you, sir, really should think about resigning. Um, I don't know why I'm finding out that the Berkeley groups meeting with you in your house. Y'all didn't know. I don't know if one, two, three knew there's four more of us. And we are the majority. Okay? So like, then you get caught doing that. You get caught all the time. So then we come into this meeting where, oh, oh my God, let's slander Councilwoman Emily Estes again in public after being warned. Like this is ridiculous. You owe Skeeter and his wife an apology. Y'all owe this staff an apology because I know when Susan resigned, I was the one up here in the building. I immediately came up here to this building, checked on every staff member, even talked to Adam to make sure he was securing his job. He was not gonna leave us too. Then somebody we get an email from the chief. I almost threw up. It was real long. I almost We get an email from the chief. I almost threw up. It was real long. I almost threw up because I swear to God, I thought he was gonna resign. Thank you, sir, for not resigning. But like, you know, y'all wanted to meet with the staff after he told you this. Now, these staff members have asked, the heads of department has asked us for a meeting. They wanted a meeting. I guess she got disciplined and got in trouble because I got an apology email from Krista saying, you know, I'm sorry if I overstepped. Then, you know, no response. I put out an email after Susan resigns. Hey, guys, didn't even triple now. I used my filter and was very, and I even used punctuation. And like, was like, one, we need a meeting. Two, we need to talk to the staff. We need to make sure they're okay. We need to reassure our staff. You know, three, we need an interim town manager. We need an interim treasurer. No response, no response. Bob Waltz hit me back. That was it. So that's who I communicated with and everything else I found out from residents and business owners. But yet I'm council. So there is no transparency. I feel like I'm stuck in a QAnon cult. Because this is like, it's just dishonesty. And I don't have a problem. I'm a educated girl. I'm a nice girl. I'm a Christian girl. I talk like a sailor sometimes when I'm very angry, but I'm gonna tell you what, I can count to four. Y'all been clowning on me and slandering me and just, it's so disrespectful. But, you know, I don't even care about myself. What I care about is my town. We lost one of the best employees we have ever had because of three people showing her disrespect. I have never in my life, I've lived here fifty years, I've never seen anything like this. And I've seen some councilmen pull some stuff. My dad is Carl Estes. Um, let me tell y'all, when y'all do something wrong, I promise you, I've known about it since I was a child. Breaking confidentiality, I ain't got to. I don't need to. I'm too damn honest. Excuse my French. You broke confidentiality. You need to resign because you slandered me about it. You told her after the closed session meeting. You broke confidentiality. But so y'all, he was in trouble, so he wanted to slander me. I bet you all y'all little high school kids can't count to four. Can't y'all? Like if not, we in trouble. So like, you know, it's just ridiculous. But y'all sit here and act like you're transparent and you're honest. And what did I tell you after the one meeting? I don't have a problem. I don't block nothing y'all do. I love y'all. I wanna work with y'all. I love my town. But I will never tolerate. Lots. You've been dishonest. And if you was involved with that, you're still free. You didn't tell us. We're above him. I don't know nothing. You know, when I find out things, y'all, I go to the budget meeting. When we come in here, I wait for the reports to, oh. We don't have anything to report. I'm like, all right, we just never have anything to report to y'all. We get to budget. It's like fifty things to report. Boom, I got a day. I'm supposed to take it all in. They can't include me. But now with the hiring thing, it was a whole nother type of level of deceit. That you all were not included in. Were you? Y'all weren't. Ma'am? So I don't know. One, two, three, four. We're the majority. There was no consensus. And when you have a woman that sits there and tell you, like, you know, we don't have your consent, you know, you don't, you don't, you don't have our support. You don't have our support. What was it? Three times? Skeeter?
Three times.
Three times? And she, what did she say? I heard she the first time? Yeah. I'm not breaking confidentiality. Susan Smith is so upset. She probably gave you all that information. I don't break confidentiality. Um, that's why it didn't go in the paper last time because he tried to do this the last time he got in trouble. And I got slandered in public. And a reporter would not write about it, but that was their goal. And they all go along on it. Robert, you came around at Christmas time. Melody, you know, I love you. You ain't, you haven't been here. But like, Roberts, you know, everything I've said now is all factual, correct? What I was telling y'all and warning y'all about this whole time, it was factual. I'm the one sending the emails. Just give your wife a hug, man. And y'all want a meeting with, with us? Please ask for it because that's our job. We're here to help y'all. Make sure y'all are secure. I don't know if it was the Berkeley Group that said that he shouldn't do a meeting or not, but like, ask us. I'm sure that we can find two of us that would be willing to meet with all the staff heads. After all this, I think they deserve the respect. I appreciate all y'all because y'all keep our town running. So thank y'all. I'm done.
Any other council members have comments? Go ahead, sir.
Well, I appreciate everyone coming out and, uh, and I, I definitely, uh, as, as I think the, the mayor mentioned, it's good to see, uh, you know. Residents engaged and that's really what we're, you know, all about. We want to, uh, you know, in the interest of just. Building bridges, moving forward. I, I'm, I'm hearing that too. And I'm gonna focus on the positive here today. Um, like I said, we've got a turning point right here. There's no question about it. Uh, I'm confident we're all up for that challenge. Because I know we've banded together before and we'll do it again as a town. Um, I think, you know, I certainly understand the passions tonight, but I will also focus on the positive. We've got a fantastic dedicated business community. We've got fa- fantastic engaged residents and we've got fantastic staff here. And I'm so proud of that. And I'll tell you what, Red Bud is an example. I'm gonna look back a few weeks ago here where we're going through. A town of our size putting on that kind of event. That doesn't happen without volunteers and it doesn't happen without business owners. It doesn't happen without staff. And by golly, I, I hear that all the time. People say, how does this town put on these kind of things? And how, you know, and Dayton is on the map because of, you know, this. And I'll tell you what, we've got some fantastic businesses and we've got, and I want to thank Ms. Crank very much. I'm gonna thank you very much for you coming out. I know this has been, uh, tough on, on your side there. I want to thank you for. Working through because, you know, like I said, we're not always a seat at aisle thing, but I will tell you, you've been very passionate trying to work with businesses as I think we all have. Tried to make that a priority. Tried to make that a priority with, you know, getting off the main street group. We've got the merchants group here. We've got the wayfinding signs. We've got a downtown revitalization grant. These are the things that happen behind the scenes. That I don't think everyone realizes, you know, look, a town of our size. I mean, we, we got a lot going on. And I'll tell you another thing. I'm gonna focus on the positive here too. A, you know, staff coming up and working diligently on this budget and a unanimous, you heard it here, a unanimous vote. For this budget. And let me tell you what's exciting about this budget. It doesn't raise tax dollars. It funds, staff gives them the cola, the cost of living that they deserve. And make sure that we're funding them. We're continuing to fund the sixth police officer that we all said we would last year. And we're gonna be, by God, we're gonna make sure that that continues on and we're funding all of our other projects and programs. And we're, you know, what else we're funded? We've got water sewer line replacements. We just funded a water treatment plant extension, which I, I'm definitely, I'll take the opportunity if I may. Welcome everyone to come this Friday at nine o'clock. We've got a ribbon cutting and open house at the water treatment plant. I'd encourage you. Uh, you, it may sound like the most boring thing ever. I tell you what, I, I am impressed by our town staff too, and Jennifer and Lucas down there and Adam before that who run that thing. I mean, my goodness, you know, the fact that we've got qualified staff down there and what a cool plant that is. So. I would encourage, and high school students, see if you can get off that day. I tell you. So there you go. It's, and that's exciting stuff. Behind the scenes, no debt. And I'll thank previous councils too for that. I, I know we've got a, a former council, a couple of former council members here. That have built that up so we don't have that debt. This is unheard of in most towns and I'm, by God, I'm proud that we're continuing that and we funded that, you know, what we did with our ARPA funds that came in. We said, yeah, fine, we don't have to take out a loan. We're gonna pay that thing off. And we're gonna continue to pay for water and sewer line replacements. We're extending sidewalks. We're working playground equipment. We're doing it all there. And we're gonna make sure new police department car, new dump truck. That's what all is being funded next year. I mean, so that's, so that is something I'll say, you know, look, we can come to differences of opinion at times. But I am proud that we can work together. And but when you get to the end of the day, we all love this town. We're gonna come up with different ideas sometimes, but I think we can walk together and that's why I'm very proud.
Everybody knows that we do great things. We're all, and we all love our town. The, the, the point of this meeting this evening was to let the light out. And let these people see that there are deceitful things happening and bad things happening. It's not all rainbows and roses.
It's not. We've got hard times ahead.
Things that we have been and we will continue. We will, we will, I, I've lived here fifty years. We will prevail with or without the council. Um, we will survive. We, we tough, kid. We, we come from, we come from.
Any other council members have comments?
Let us not forget on the personnel that had two weeks notice for Susan.
Yes, please.
Since we got there now.
And maybe a note to retraction out for what went out to the public.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Wallace, do you have any comments?
Can, can we do that, Robert?
We have no one.
Just tell Mrs., just tell Ms. Crank that I did miss her last month.
Okay, thank you. On that section, can we, can we add?
You mean retracting the other part?
I want, I want the section that went out to the public about the treasurer. Coming here and leaving. It's already out to the public. I need a retraction or something.
Before it's filed.
Yeah, because like, the public needs to know because it's just us, other than Zoom and Facebook Live.
It's strike that before the next one.
Yeah.
I need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Ayes, ayes.
Good night, everyone.